With liberty and justice for all.
Well, I saw him a little bit out in Ace Park a lot.
Well.
And he said, yeah, I said, yeah.
Are you, are you ready to go Jeff? I'm sorry, are you ready to go?
Oh, yeah.
How are you?
Great, Harry.
Yeah.
Okay, let's see, you actually have some stuff out and you count?
Yeah, I've got some copies of stuff too, in case we did. Troy is supposed to be here to talk about the wastewater treatment plant needs. I sent out an email with some quotes. Melissa, if you want, pass some of those down. There you go. I'll probably save that till he gets here, but in a nutshell, like I said in my email, we feel like there's a pretty good need for some of the functions that the wastewater treatment plant would be monitored via remote alarms. This came from a situation where we had a power kick out. I think it's been about a month. Maybe about a month ago that this happened. It resulted in a slight overflow with our treatment plant. And however I knew about it till the next day.
Have we ever had alarms there?
I don't, I don't know that you have. The other thing is that Troy got to look at it and part of the problem is that the backup generator is on a manual switch and not an automatic switch, which is another part of the project. Honestly.
Pricey.
Yeah, and, and I'll take the brunt of the blame on this. I never even thought when that power went out to check the treatment plant. I mean, just never even occurred to me, so. I'll, I'll take the blame on that because, like I said, it just never even occurred to my mind. So, anyway, they have requests there for, for some of those items. Moving on, and we'll come back to that when Troy gets here and talk to it a little bit more. Fall cleanup date, I know we, we talked about possibly having one in the fall. Now's a good time to, to talk about it. I've got a couple of proposed dates. Either nine twenty-five or ten two, ten two is the week before Bridge Fest starts, obviously. Nine twenty-five is an open week also. Talk's Way Day is nine eighteen.
Yeah, I'm just looking that up. It's nine eighteen, first, west central.
I'm trying to think in ten two it'd be good right before festival. Not that I have any strong feeling on there yet, but.
Really?
No, I'm not.
So what is your will and pleasure? Do you want to do one? Yes, okay. Eighteenth third or second?
Well, eighteenth is the same day as Talk's.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, twenty-fifth, my bad.
Well, you know, ten two getting up close to this, why don't, why don't, why don't?
That'll give me a couple of weeks to, to advertise, which is why I was looking for, that's why I didn't do nine eighteen.
So we're, we're waiting on Troy to come and talk about these other things that he just mentioned?
Yes, yes.
Well, the whole bottom line is we, we need alarms and they only go off to contact people. I mean, that's what we need. It's pricey.
It is pricey. I think before we got a copy of this.
Okay.
So, anyway, Talk's Way Day will set for nine twenty-five and I think we'll do, I think we did nine to twelve is what we did in the spring. It was nine to twelve.
So Talk's Way is nine eighteen, fall cleanup day is going to be nine twenty-five.
Nine twenty-five. And we will do that nine to twelve. I'll get our dumpsters ordered.
And where, where is it located?
This will be over at the Utilities Department, which is right behind the, the Police Department, four sixteen South Jefferson. And I'll send something over to the paper for an advertisement. For your information, hired Tony Keller as a full-time person and John Kelly is a part-time person. They started today, just for your information. Looking forward to working them, I think we're going to work out.
How old are they? I mean, I can't ask that. Are they, are they, are they, they're not?
One gentleman is years younger than myself and another guy is, is kind of a younger guy.
Okay, well, I know we've had, well, you know. Anyway.
Yep, anyway.
I can't ask that.
No, you cannot.
I'm sure somebody out there is.
You can't ask.
No, it's really.
I don't care what they think, but anyway.
Upcoming projects, just to kind of fit in on a few things. We're going to be doing hydrant testing and flushing next week in coordination with fire department. And I think Josh has already advertised some of that stuff in media. We're also going to be doing road crack sealing the week after that.
So have you identified where you're going to be doing it yet, or you just kind of?
We just kind of go back through some of the pavement and Doug has already kind of looked at some areas, but he hasn't given me a list of where he's going to be doing it at. It's going to be out on an as needed basis, pretty much.
Well, he's starting to do it right now.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. And, and let's see.
Community crossing.
Yeah, see finalized community crossing project, we're still holding up on one bad place that we need to dig up and repair on a queue. That was where the milling machine got a little bit too deep and the trucks coming in through there. It got into the base pretty bad, so in agreement with Milestone, we're going to dig it up and repack the base and they're going to come in and relay the asphalt. That, no extra charge, so everything will come out good and in good shape. Hey, let's see. Once we get that done, they can give me the final bill and I can do the closeout procedure for community crossings, that's good. Jackson Jack's building, we're still waiting the final manifest from the hazardous materials remover, removal. They said forty days past that, so it'll put us mid-October when that's pretty much finished out. And I think the next step would be the asbestos inspection.
Is Roger able to do that?
He says he has a person that can do the inspection.
I mean, that's totally up to you. So what is the manifest that they're sending? Just to recap the work that they've done.
Yeah, it's the list, and basically it was car cleaning products that was left in there. And, yeah. So, anyhow.
I'm not sure how many people is Roger.
Yeah, he knows a lot of people.
He's a person for.
He does. Jackson Borghese project, the preliminary engine with Roger is still in progress. Still trying to get with, with U Mac and some other people for some quotes on water extension, quotes for water line repair on Martin. Putting one more quote on that. Miscellaneous paving and patching, I was in contact with Milestone last week again with Warren. He said he definitely tried to have me something, but my thought is if I don't have anything by the next board meeting, we'll just kind of move on and go with the quotes from Price and get some of those.
Okay, well, let's hold up there a minute. In light of the funding for street removal next year.
This would be out of this year.
Yeah, I know, I know, but, but where are we at in the budget this year?
We'll be fine on our paving for contract, which I think is about a hundred thirteen thousand is what we had set aside, is that correct?
Yeah, a hundred thirteen, so.
So we should, we should have a little bit left over from community crossing now. The bid was in higher than, than water match was.
Yeah.
So that'll eat up a little bit of that balance, but we also have twelve thousand dollars for pavement repair.
What's going on there?
And that's why I, well, I think it's down, especially when Lovey's going to the general fund, so.
Yeah, well, anyway, what, okay, since a hundred thirteen, this doesn't have the, 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 the crossing out yet.
No, no, that's what I'm saying.
How much is that coming out?
Well, it'd be about, I think originally it was around eighty-five to ninety was our match.
Okay.
So then it ran over a little bit because their bid was higher.
Yeah.
So it'll be, it'll be close. We may have, I don't know, seventy, eight thousand dollars left.
Well, we still have twenty-two to five twenty-seven in place that we have not used and may not.
I'm, I'm, I'm working on that. But we also have the twelve thousand on the paving by contract. Set down there, road repairs.
Where's the front side we have?
In the.
Yeah, do we have a, in the fund this quarter, this part of the public?
Sidewalk, white top, white contract, that's that. Just thinking we, oh, I know what it is, local road and suite, street for twelve thousand.
Yeah.
That's what I was kind of thinking about using for some of this miscellaneous paving.
Well, we have a, or we can be appropriating those, or maybe go back and do it, right?
No, there's, there's twelve thousand dollars appropriated.
There is twelve, okay, well, what, what?
It is fun two oh two.
Two oh two.
Yes, fun two oh two.
There it is, yeah. Well, I mean, we were looking at what, thirty-seven thousand on that quote from the one?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember on top of my head. Thirty-three, I think, is the number. I'll have to go back and look. But again, we can prioritize that down once we relook at the quotes. And if Milestone comes in with something different, you know, obviously we can pick and choose what we do. When you're funding.
When did you say he thought he'd get them in?
He was going to try to get them in to me this week or next, but when I talked to him last week, he just says, you know, they're behind, they're behind, they're behind right now.
Obviously, we don't want to do anything, even if it come in and we decide to do it, obviously we're not going to do anything over Bridge Festival.
Right.
We might wait much longer than that.
Well, I don't know if we want to. I, I, I think we want to try to get it done, but again, I, I don't want to leave any money on the table, especially given the fact that we know what next year's going to look like with our motor vehicles. Okay.
Water line.
Yeah, water line on Martin, still waiting on one more quote for that.
What's going on there?
Down on Martin Street, we have a, don't quote me on the size, I want to say it's a ten, it's a big inch, big inch line, it's a water main, it comes up through there. And it's partially exposed, it runs down through by a ditch. And if you look down into it, you can actually see the top of the water. Just over the years, it's roared away and everything. My, Roger kind of feels like that needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah. Absolutely.
So we're, we're waiting on numbers for that as well. Next thing is sidewalk repairs completed on Jefferson and East York. We've got those two spots done, they look pretty nice, I think. Our next repair is going to be on thirty-six East by Park Bridge Motel. Cody's got a pit there that we're waiting on him to prepare, I think he's going to do it this week, so we can do that on our sidewalks. Hopefully the week after, I'd like to have those done before Bridge Festival, for sure. Also, South College Cross from the park. There's a section where one of our trees is raised up, I want to get that one fixed. And also College and High where it's kind of eroded away on the side, there's that high buildup sidewalk that used to be in front of, it's over by Doctor Kane, it's old house, I believe. It's got a side to it, it's kind of, I don't know how else to explain it, it's kind of taped a little bit there. So we need to get that fixed as well. But also going to pour a little ADA playground entrance ramp at a park. Get that squared away there. So Troy, you want to talk a little bit about some of our equipment needs? I know I already prefaced it a little bit with.
He just gave some bills and said you're going to talk about it.
I kind of told him what led up to this, was the power surge and, you know, we.
Yeah, so.
I told him, I said, I didn't even think about sending anybody in here to check it, I mean, that's my habit. So.
Yeah, so, so right now, I think we kind of covered it last meeting about the whole issue and the overflow we had. You know, we, we have no alarm system down there to notify anybody if there's a power fail, if anything trips out.
Well, we have backup generators, right? They, they work.
So we have a backup generator, yeah. But the problem was the power was still on. What it did with the surge, it tripped everything out individually, we had to go to every little controller and reset everything. So it was still showing power, but that's the other thing, our, our generators, you know, it's a manual, we have to go start it, transfer everything.
What? Really?
Yeah, that's.
When I, I was looking up the data for Talk's, Talk's. So, okay, so, yeah, we, we, that, that, that's kind of important there. Well, so.
The switch is very exciting.
Yeah, I know, twenty-one thousand.
And that's, so the, the way the setup is down there is kind of weird. There's two generators. One runs the, the raw, the raw lift station pumps and then the, the lab. And then there's one, the old army generator down, that runs like the storm pumps. Neither of them, this is just for the, the raw pump transfer switch, but but if we had, but, but what I'm trying to say is how it's separate, like one isn't going to take care, actually, there's nothing that, there's no generator from the top of the hill to run the aeration system. So it's kind of screwed up. But that, that's kind of why these alarms, and the alarms are the same way, that's why there's three different prices for alarms, because we have to do the front end, the raw, and then we have to do one at the hill. That way we know if the blowers trip out, because if the blowers trip out, then technically we're not treating, so then we're bypassing. So we have to.
So what we propose, what's proposed, and we'll keep a safe compliance.
That's right here.
All three of them.
Yeah, all three of them, yeah.
Now, that's the alarm system, that'll tell us if we have pump fail, power fail, blower fail.
Well, okay, yeah, okay, let's not say compliance. But what about top of the hill, the aeration thing, you said that's not?
So, so like this, for instance, this last one, the return pumps to the aeration, they tripped out, we still had power. So if that would have happened and it would have notified us, we could have just reset it and then everything would have worked just fine, even though we didn't have, we don't have backup power up there yet.
Well, I guess if we have it down below, the notification, well, you, someone will go out there and they would have a, probably a SOP to go up the hill and check that too.
Right.
Okay.
So, I mean, I would say like the first, we could get by with the two cheaper ones. And maybe save the, I think the five thousand dollar one was the one up, up top of the hill. If you wanted to phase it out. But the two, the, the two smaller priced ones would take care of our storm pump station and our raw pump, because any one of those go out, we don't know, that's, that's going to cost a dollar or a backup. So, so those are pretty important.
Well, we're right at.
So the question I was talking to Cindy about, and this, I'll pose it to Brandy too, is maybe that ARP money, let's come down with it, or this, since it can be used for sewer.
It could, yeah. What else have we got? Well, wastewater operating, pretty much right on budget, you know, there's not been any, we're right there. Where is my ear? Well, we don't have anything left, appreciation, we don't, yeah, right. Well, we have sixty-seven thousand wastewater improvement we could use also.
It needs improved.
It needs improved. So now they would be, they got there, we, we, we could take it out of operating, run over and have to do additional appropriation, which creates a lot of work.
And I tell you what, I'll, I'll ask. The alarm system is the same alarm system we currently have on our lift station, so that's why.
Yeah.
We stuck with them, we've already got an account, we're familiar with it, right, all the guys are. As far, that's just, we have the guy from Boozer Power here, and asked to get a quote just to see a ballpark, I mean, we can price this out, I mean, I would recommend doing that anyways, but. Just have an idea what it's going to cost.
The switch, what we're at here, we had the switch at twenty-one, we've got three alarms, one's like.
Thirteen, two, two, seven, thirteen, one, like.
Almost thirty-five.
Thirty-five thousand, yeah, yeah, good, okay, so we're looking at thirty-five thousand, we have sixty-seven thousand wastewater improvement that we've been saving for a special occasion. I guess this might be that. Yeah, I'd go to do that and use the operating, since we've been around on budget, income of the budget, we don't have to. No, I mean, yeah, we, we can do this.
Is that a motion?
I move.
Also?
Call the board.
Do we need to get three quotes on the switch?
Let me get another quote, try to, I know I can get at least, I can get two more quotes on that, transfer switch.
Do we have to? If it's over, I think it's, yeah, if it's over a certain amount, we have to. How about if we tell them to get the quotes and if this is the one we're going to go ahead?
That's fine for me, I mean, I we're with this alarm company already, right?
Yeah, well, I was talking about the transfer switch.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the, the alarm company, we just need, we need to stick with those guys.
See, Boozer Power? Is that what you're talking about, the dollar amount?
So get a different quote from, uh, New York City besides.
Oh, yeah, it's the.
I'll talk to him, he's waiting on them.
Yeah.
Maybe like Houston, they got a bluffy.
Yeah. We just always get one, one quote we can, just to be good, be business. Yeah, there's a question.
Well, I'll get a few, I'll get a couple more.
Okay, thanks.
Good enough it does, let's leave some money to check. So, yeah, so. Yeah, sorry. Randy?
The Jag Grant's been closed out. That was the grant for the radio, the non-matching grant, a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. The town's been reimbursed, bills are all paid and that grant's closed.
That's good.
There's a here's a copy of the last month's calls for service. And the numbers, that old reporting system we had, they still haven't got that worked out, so I don't have statistics on it. We're gearing up for the Bridge Festival next month and hoping the Health Department don't close it down. The two thousand thirteen Ford Explorer, the one we're trading in, is in the town shop. And he's replaced the front brakes and rear wheel bearings and got two tires that have balled on it, so I called Double D and told them to find me some cheap tires to get us through for a couple of months. That'll get the safe, but.
I think also, also said they match prices on tires.
On tires? Well, we've gotten them at Double D before because they get the government pricing and it's already on a bid, competitive bid thing, so. The contractor's gearing up to replace, to start working on the roof here. Maybe this week, he called me over the weekend asking about paint colors and such. We went with white on the paint colors for the building. The two thousand sixteen Ford that's in the shop from the wreck is still in the shop waiting on windshield. That's the final repair that's got to do. Hadn't been able to find one and can't do anything else till windshield shows up and then he can paint the roof and stuff, he got to make sure it doesn't, doesn't seal. This came in an email a short while ago that I don't recall ever seeing before, in the, those radar signs that, that give the photographs and stuff. They're asking us to renew a one-year management of those signs, which will send us the pictures automatically and, which we're not getting all the pictures because some of the vehicle's going faster than the picture.
What?
Takes, yeah.
Well, how fast does that take?
Um, well, you have to adjust it, you can, you can make a delay on it so it catches a vehicle at a certain time, or you can speed it up so it catches it instantly. Because it can, it can pick up the radars, for instance, the one on thirty-six. It can pick up the radar from a vehicle coming all the way from forty-one before it gets to it. If there's nothing else in front of it, so if it's over speed, then it might take the picture either too early or too late.
So, so, wait, wait, what's the money?
Three thousand dollars for one year.
One year?
Yeah.
And that's to do, to take the picture and send it to?
But that's also the traffic data and if we have any problems with them, they're fixing it. I don't recall ever being told that before when we purchased the two signs.
Yeah. When did we buy those?
Well, one, yeah, one was purchased by the Street Department and one by the Police Department. So that's something to kick around. I don't know if the traffic data has helped you any.
But it, it's useful.
Gives you car counts and stuff.
Especially, you know, like when we set them out and we can do car counts. Average daily traffic on Road ADT, now the it, it's good information to have, which is kind of what pitched in on me.
You want to continue one of them or? I mean, the sign's still going to work and it's still going to do the same.
Just won't get pictures.
Right.
But it takes pictures of the front of the car anyway, doesn't it?
Right.
So we don't get license.
Yeah, but it's not going to have the traffic any other day either.
Right. We still have one. That's up to you guys.
Well, a three thousand, we can split between police and the street again, and we think of one, or we can go with that, and all we're doing is just taking speed. Well.
The data is.
Have we, have we used it, the pictures for anything?
The pictures we have not, the data we're using because it gives us a, okay, every day you get a car coming through here at this, at this time of day.
Speeding.
Speeding every day, so it, it, it gives us an idea of when we need to be there. We've sat down, like on Anderson Street, we've sat down next to Ace Hardware and catched nobody coming through there, we'll leave there. We go in five minutes and you'll get an alert, somebody's driving forty, forty-one, whatever. I had one, I think on thirty-six, just over the weekend, it popped up like forty-eight in the thirty.
This is fairly common.
Down at the school crossing.
Oh, oh, that's where you.
Yeah.
Well, I say we keep it, but I'll let you guys discuss it.
Well, we split it fifty-fifty unless Jeff doesn't want to contribute out of motor vehicle, what do you think, Jeffrey?
I just want to look that up.
I know, it's, it's a little beat up in there, looking at all the holes.
Any good news on your formula, let's find out. Any good news on your formula, let's find out.
Need that one over, I can pull it from.
Well.
Yeah, I'd say we're just going to have to keep one with the data.
Even if we keep one, we can move it around to wherever. You know, if you've got a project coming up and you want traffic data on that location, we can move it over there and get that, traffic data.
Well, Jeff, what you got planned for equipment and equipment rental, so you need to do the, where are you?
Uh, I've talked to Alan and Doug, we know for sure we'd like to get a thumb for a bucket, uh, for the backhoe. I think he made, talked to Dave about that too, because I think it's a great idea. Yeah, a thumb. Okay, so you've got your bucket on the backhoe, on the back part of it. A thumb is an articulating, uh, lever that allows you to kind of grapple things with, with the backhoe from the back. We also, we all already have a clamshell bucket on the front of it, which is very handy for like ripping out, uh, concrete, that kind of stuff, it's nice.
But there's more of each, like you kind of told, told a pause to that. I mean, I could split.
I kind of plan on it.
We have equipment that we left in other utilities, right?
Yeah, we, we can split it around.
How much is the major weed?
I, I think on the high end in five thousand, uh, we'll probably be able to get it for less, I would say. Uh, we're also looking at a grappler attachment for our, uh, skid steer. We're also looking at, uh, I think it's a fifteen ton press for Alan's shop. He doesn't have a press in there at all, so kind of, any, except that, that's something that he's wanted for years, so I'd like to give that for him. We're also talking about. We can't.
Well, I, 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 you know, we continue, we, we, we split the cost originally, it'd be nice to keep it, reevaluate, maybe next year, Brandy, Brandy can bring in the, uh, some data that shows, try to justify the expense again for another year. I don't know, I feel like we got one out there, it's not, uh, doing any thing other than showing how bad to drive it, it's not.
It always slows me down.
Doesn't, what are you speaking for it?
You stop paying attention, it's just like everybody sees a police car, if they're speeding or not, they slow down immediately, it's a deterrent.
Yeah.
Oh, him, what am I doing?
Yeah, what am I doing? Presence is a deterrent.
Yeah.
So, so do you want to take that M B H machine and equipment rental? No, no.
Well, you got rental, you got equipment, either one, I mean, it doesn't really matter as long as you leave, uh, nothing there for the other things.
Fifteen, fifteen hundred, yeah, it's not going to kill that, fifteen hundred, that's out of it. We can do it.
Well.
Is that a motion?
I move.
All set.
All favor.
Aye. What about that bush hog or smaller you were talking about?
You know how that's doing then?
Yeah, we got, uh.
I accept that as a, um, bush hog.
We, we've kind of thought about maybe retiring it.
Why don't the acres are out of the pond and, uh, acre wise, gosh, I don't like, I'm bad, bad judge.
I tell you, we're, we really have to, uh, use the sidewalk on it, the roadside, you know, those areas. The retention lawn, we've been mowing those with the, uh, Hustler, John Beer, we just rip them off.
You mow that often?
We have, and we, we got damped on that for my.
You know, you had a bush hog, six foot, ten foot, whatever, I mean, it worked on that fifty-five thousand, so it's, god.
We, we just got a, what is it?
You can mow it about every.
Five foot, five foot bush hog is, is what we got from A H W here not too long ago. So, I mean, that, that's another thing we've picked around as far as new equipment is the, the sidewalk, uh, bush hog.
Okay, so you got the bush hog.
Yeah, we, we wanted to place the sidewalk bush hog, I think most of that's repaired now. There's also been, one of the other issues we have is around the streets, that wastewater treatment plant, we grow it around that, we sprayed it. We need a good way to kind of mow all that stuff down, and I think Keith has talked to the county, maybe about using their, uh, see if they had a flail mower on, on excavator or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we've got ideas for equipment. Let's hope we don't want to leave anything on the table.
Yeah, I want to show you, show me. Oh, yeah.
So, Randy?
That's all I have.
So we're up, Randy?
Yes, we are.
Planes four, forty-nine, nine, fifty-six, oh, seven, if any questions on those, and I have a plane voucher, seventy-eight dollars, sixty-nine, twenty-two.
Uh, so, yeah, I'm nine eleven on, on the eight-three-one, you got the storm range bill that we had.
Yeah, I have that separate, but I just wanted to make sure you guys.
Yeah.
Were aware about it, I guess maybe it was an approval on a storm board meeting, but I didn't get any information on it, so I wanted to make sure I got an approval.
I see our, uh, July electric, it's two hundred and thirty-three thousand.
It was warm.
It was warm, well, my bill says it was warm. Yeah, it's a lot of electric.
Some of us still have air conditioning, so it doesn't affect us.
Well, I can't keep, please, whatever you're there. Uh, I don't know, what else we got here, I see you got some more activity south border, it's not making.
Yeah, there's a little bit of, few planes here and there coming through.
Okay, so, um, I move, yeah, you move, I'll second, both of them?
All favor.
All right.
All right, before we jump any further, Randy, let me jump in here. Remember, you were here with Jeff, you were here with Ed, was you, right? And, and we talked about the equipment fund. Where did we leave that, were we supposed to bring that to the board and, and, and we just, remember they, they, they had a hundred and eighty thousand?
Have they ever given us that money back?
Well, that's what we talked about.
Yeah, and they said it would be, probably, it could be a few months before they got that, but I think they were wanting a reassurance that that's what we wanted to do.
Yeah, they, they, they want to, gee, god, I'd bring it up, so, you, anybody, maybe.
Yeah, it was a hundred and twenty thousand that they wanted refund to us and then they take a balance.
It's good, they reserve money that we had to borrow or something, we paid into some of that.
And then we talked about, we, with that meeting, we talked about, uh, well, where do we want to put that? Do we want to put it in cash reserve or put it in depreciation, the electric department, either one would be a good place. But do we need a, I don't know, should we do a motion to bring it back or do we need to look?
I don't think it would hurt that you guys decide where you want to be put it tonight and reach back out to them and club them though so they can turn that problem.
We talked about this in December, why is it August and they're still talking about it as opposed to giving it to us?
I'm wondering if they were kind of wanting us to say, this is what we want to do, maybe. I don't, I mean, I thought that was very clear, but I don't know.
I don't know how.
That kind of took it from that meeting.
Yeah, I did, uh, you know, bottom line, sitting there, sitting here, it's still ours and, uh, we, we, uh, I get the majority of it back, we could ask for all of it back, but it makes sense to keep some there, I mean, I don't know who else we're going to use in the future, I foresee us renewing this contract, but honestly, for next year.
Was it fifty thousand, one, right?
I just number.
That's, that's.
That's what I remember.
Yeah, put a plus minus after.
So do you, somebody want to make a motion and I'll reach out to them and get that checked out?
All favor. While we're on this subject, uh, we're, we don't need to do it tonight, but we need to be thinking about their contract and what we're going to do.
Yes, uh, yeah, that, that's something.
I mean, I know it's September and it's going to come pretty quick, so.
Well, they also emphasize, there's twelve member communities that use IP service for and have a contract. We're one of twelve that are doing, well, we did, we're doing it on an annual basis right now, starting this year.
Which I don't think they'll do again, well, they did.
Well, they really like to have for planning purposes, Jeff, you can jump at any time if I put you this, but for planning purposes, yeah, they like.
A little more longer here.
And that's why, just to be able to plan. I know.
Go ahead.
Well, I know Nick doesn't like some of the verbiage in the contract, but, you know, Jeff and, and, and the one fellow sitting here. Uh, you know, they've had a great relationship, they're both very happy, uh, with, uh, progress and, uh, it shows on the report. We had a point four outages four years ago, now we had four this year and so it indicates that we are getting our infrastructure electrical department improved upon and, uh.
Yeah, Brett and, and, uh, Dan have put in a major reason why those numbers have gone down, along with pole replacements and stuff, and that stuff. Their ability to respond very quickly has been a major driving factor, factor.
So, yeah, I, I don't know how much we want to discuss contract, I suppose we need to request, well, would you, I mean, what's, uh.
How many years was it, thirty?
Three or five, is what you're going to say.
They generally want five, I'd definitely be willing to do a three.
That was an extension on a line tower from.
Okay. Uh, yeah, three on the service is okay with me, uh, thanks, it is.
We want to put it to bed tonight, we can't.
I just think you guys need to kind of think about, you know, what, what are we going to do with our electric department? What do we want it to look like in the future? And, and then kind of scale what you want them to provide. Do, do you guys want a two-man lineman crew? Do you want just, uh, one lineman? Do you want a lineman and apprentice? I mean, long-term, what do we want it to look like, what, you know, staffing? I think that, that would drive a lot of what we do, contract. But that's just, that's my opinion.
Obviously, at some point, Dan's going to fully retire, I would imagine, he may not want to do that forever.
Well, ideally, it'd be nice to have four German, but I don't think that's realistic.
No, no, four, no.
Uh, so we have one lineman, we have a part-time lineman, we could have two full-time linemen down the road, that would be great, plus you have a helpful role a lot of times.
Well, I mean, to me, he's young, but Brett's not.
He's not young though.
He's not a kid.
Not a kid. We say that?
Yeah.
Okay. Jack? If we talk, can't talk about. But, yeah, I mean, what we had a motion second, I mean, I, I favor a three-year contract, you know, it's.
All favor.
Aye.
I just didn't catch it, so, I just, she seconded Mark and Mark in our.
Uh, we got you.
I'm not sure I'm voting mine.
Yeah, Jeff, it's a good point. And even getting a second lineman that is perhaps not. Old, uh, that'll be here a while.
That's not, yeah, there.
Because, you know, there's so many opportunities out there within our rock mill. Closer, that we just.
Well, everybody knows that, now, I mean, you know, we've had lengthy discussions, you know, what we think we, we can and what we can't, but. I, I just kind of feel like we need to set a course and we can say, this, this is what our plan is going to be, this is what our staffing is like in the future. You know, if, if we need to retain IP for, for certain things, that's cool, we maintain on contract. Run into situations where we can't handle, you put together some bits.
Well, I'll look at it this way, we do a three-year contract, starts first next year, towards year two, four, never mind. Uh, yeah, I guess thirty-six months to, to explore some of those options, uh, you know, maybe we'll find the lineman there, find someone who wants to become a lineman. I'd rather, I guess realistically, it's probably more realistic if my lineman likes maybe slowing down a little bit, maybe not drive or something like that, I don't, you just don't know.
Yeah, you, you don't, but before we have that strategic plan in place, you can't really go out and beat the bushes and find. Like I said, I just kind of like to have.
May I ask where you want that money put on the input?
Oh, yes, where do we?
I just wanted to document that as depreciation.
Where, where should we put the money back from if, if it's accumulated for our material? We don't need it in operating, it's where we have a chunk of money, it's good to try to save it, right? So we have.
You have two lines there.
We have cash reserve, we have depreciation, we can put it in both. And, you know, we, we can, we, I, I, I don't know. We, we haven't had a big project, we can just budget for that depreciation, then we can, we have four-one-nine in there now, we put in a hundred and five-one-nine.
You're going to need a digger truck before too long. To where we can make money or leave it in operation, that's what I want to do.
Yeah, we'll put it where you're going to make money, but put it in the, uh, depreciation, we can buy a truck out. What is that, what truck do you want to leave this truck?
This is the digger truck, we, we.
Oh, yeah, we haven't done things like that for decades.
And it's getting tougher.
Oh, Nick?
But it's still big, but it's getting harder to get it, uh, die electrically certified.
Oh.
So that's the issue that we're, we're running into.
Yeah, they're right, okay, I, I move with depreciation.
All favor.
Um, the main streets sent a letter, they want to ask permission to hold their Santa five K run again on Saturday, December fourth. So they'd like to close the northeast corner of the square, on North Virginia Street, around one o'clock until the race is over, estimated four-thirty timeframe.
Is that going to be twenty-five dollars?
Wasn't that, uh, that wasn't the one we talked about last meeting?
That was the Halloween thing.
A Halloween run?
This is the Christmas.
This is Christmas one.
We do.
There are a lot of runners.
Not me. Is that okay with everybody to go ahead and put on schedule?
Sounds okay. I move.
Yeah, keep second.
All favor.
Aye.
This one was that day?
Um, December fourth, they said approximately starting at one P M. Um, and the only. Other thing was the guys met with their, um, Santa's rep on clothing. The only thing that they did not want elect was the lighter weight pants. So made that annual contract from eighteen-twenty to twenty-two sixty-three was the only change that wanted to make sure you were all aware of.
Okay, well, good, so they know what they're getting, they're okay with it, they won't have to worry about washing.
And I.
That's pretty good service.
I think, I'm not a hundred percent, but I think I remember a conversation between Mandy and Bob on that. They may, I think we may get logoing on that at no extra charge. We didn't elect to pay for it, but they were offering it to us at no charge, so, I said, as long as it was a.
We'll help them keep it safe.
Free add-on, then we, you know, of course, I just wanted to make sure that you were all aware of that, um, change on that. That is all I have.
Look, good, okay. Are you all caught up on your motions and?
Yes.
I just want to make sure everybody voted theirs, so we're good. Cindy, do you got anything for us?
I do, I have three things. I know.
Okay.
They're easy things.
All right.
So, last meeting I was here and I think Dane was here at that meeting, um, you gave me, or granted, um, contributing towards the housing study. Um, so I have the proposal from them, I'm waiting on the final agreement to sign. But the way we're going to work out payment is we're going to pay fifty percent upfront and the other fifty percent upon completion. So you had approved up to two thousand dollars, is that okay for the twenty-twenty-two year, paying in that year for you guys?
Yeah.
We're quietly doing.
I was not that mean as well.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't going to cause an issue to wait until next year. And it'll be probably like March, it'll be early in the year, so. Just want to make sure you're good. Um, the other thing, if Randy had given me a letter, you will need this signed, Randy, and sent back to him. I'm working with the Park County Historical Society on the Park County Museum on thirty-six to get some environmental things done similar to what you guys did at the Jackson Jax. That letter was sent from them, I'm pretty sure because the museum was within the town boundary, it's only asking if you support the project of getting the environmental intake assessment completed there. It's not, no dollars, nothing like that, it's just asking if you are in support of that project.
We won't be receiving any funds, so it kind of eliminates us from requesting that they be spent on, at the site.
I think they're just telling you, it's their language that they use, that there is state money being spent on that site. And do you support the fact that we're spending state money on the site to? Because it used, at one time, the gas station, they believed there's an underground tank in the front landing drive-through area that would need to be investigated and make sure it was kept properly and not removed. And then they'll also do a soil sampling where the old oil change pit was on the west side of the building. That's the two things we're going to do under that grant.
You move or you move?
I mean, it, it's requesting Dave's signature on the letter.
There you go. There you go.
I'm making a motion Dave's lines.
Those old tanks always leak, guaranteed they're gonna find them.
All in favor, is that what it is?
All in favor?
I had made it, just so we've got something documenting. I just was curious when I asked her, it says that the funds at the town of Rockville would be spent at that site, but she's determined we're not gonna get any money, so.
Well, the reason why we're doing that at the museum, we wanna go after a D N R restoration grant. So, in order to do that, we've gotta make sure all of the other things have been addressed prior to asking for any additional funding for rehabilitation, so.
Do you want copied on this back through the email that I received?
Sure. I do know the week of September twentieth is when they're supposed to be doing their tank investigation and soil sampling, so. Not that I should interfere with anything, but that's just what we're doing time-wise. Just sharing, that's what's happening down there. And the last thing I had. Randy and I had a short conversation, I talked to Dave too, about the whole American Rescue Plan funding and stuff, so. I do have some documentation that I had told Dave about, you know, just about appropriate uses and also the calculation of, you know, what your potential revenue loss is. And I'm kind of looking at parts, I know he usually takes into the numbers quite a bit, so. I'm just here offering my help if there's anything that I can do.
You're talking about they filed for writing the last month?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they did extend that deadline.
So.
After you got it done.
It's paying two payments, one this year, one next year, yeah. Do we have to put that in separate account? Have separate, segregated, yeah.
And it has to come strictly into it, straight out of it, nobody's earning anywhere.
I mean, there's some really good guidelines on what it can and can't be used.
Pretty broad usage, really, I mean, utilities are.
I mean, it is, but like I was sharing with Troy when he was asking about some of those expenses, so it has to meet the definition of an eligible project under S R F funding for water and wastewater. So, you do have to be kind of careful, you can't just throw it at a water project, you need to make sure it's an eligible project.
How about facilities? Does it have to be just infrastructure, can't be facilities, I mean, you know, same.
You, yeah, I mean, there's good, that's why I'm just offering, if you wanna sit down and have discussion, if you have a list of ideas and we can just kind of bounce them back. Yeah, whatever, you just tell me, but the first thing I've encouraged most meetings to look at is to calculate your revenue loss. So, if you would, and there's, it tells you how to do that, basically. Because most meetings are gonna use that first, they're gonna put some of that money aside to use for the revenue loss and then make plans for the whatever.
Can you fill in on that, show me the calculations, do you have that in file?
I actually printed something.
In anticipation.
And was there a deadline on that too? I mean, not, maybe not a deadline, but.
Reporting requirement timelines.
You have to have your plan put together, and then I'm wondering, I haven't read further into it, does the plan have to be approved before something can happen? Because we should receive those funds at any time, but I didn't want that money to go out.
They're not approving any plans, they're going to assume everybody understands the rules and they're gonna abide by it. And then when they go to audit you later, if you didn't abide by the rules, they'll be paying you back. Basically, is how they've done it.
So, is this, when they say revenue, what type of revenue, we have all kinds of revenue, we have tax-based, we have utility-based. Oh, so let's take gross revenues from four different time points. Well, holy moly, this goes out to twenty-three.
Yes. So, you can calculate your loss for those three, for those years, save back that money, because you don't have, you only have to have it committed by twenty-four and spent by twenty-six.
Yeah. Okay. Well, it's, yeah, so this is my copy?
Yes, you may have it.
Thanks.
But that's the interim rule, if you wanna look up the full guidelines, Park.
Okay.
The final interim rule, they call it. If that makes any sense.
Kind of what you're doing.
From the treasury, from the treasury.
Kind of like doing an after-action report on an ongoing event.
Yeah. So, anyway, Park, if you, if you do wanna sit down, I'd be more than happy to.
Yeah, yeah, so kindly give you this and I'll touch base with you. Couple things, you're an old visitor, are you?
I've done, that's the three things I have.
I don't wanna step on you.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, so, Jeff, case, whatever, what's case, what's her name, case of? No, engineering?
Contractors.
Contractors, yeah, growing, patching stuff, did you ever get on them?
I talked to Doug about that today, we were talking about. In Rockville Road, technical property, they just try to throw those in on the miscellaneous. Price or price, someone wants to throw in on that.
Well, yeah, you could do that.
Now, the case, I think Troy has some contact information he'd like for me to.
That was my phone.
Well, I think we ought to develop a relationship with them or some type of company, because you know we're gonna have cuts every year, and we're getting more and more roads paid. And, you know, it'd be nice to accumulate those every year and try to get them out, kind of like we were doing graveyard gruvers, we probably get back in the schedule somehow. I think it's a good idea, when you have a new road pavement, you hate to have to cut it and it sits there, well, you know what, it does, it just is gonna deteriorate fast and rest of the road. Of course, I don't know what the costs are for these guys, maybe something will say, holy moly, whatever. It's an option right now, I guess, without further information. The other thing I wanted to ask you, Jeff, you know anything about, we're gonna go put the rails up for the handicap ramps over on thirty-six?
And we're really taking the yellow tape down.
I know, yeah. That's still an ongoing thing, they're just trying to get the contractors to come back in and finish them up.
That guy still has office out there in North Forty-One every day?
Uh, from Endo. I don't know if they're still back out there, but I've talked to Butch Crossley at Milestone, and I know that they're really pushing to get that wrapped up. Because, of course, they can't, they can't finalize it until.
It's all up?
And I suppose they can't take the tape down until.
Yeah, well, the event's coming up here in a few weeks, it's sure be nice to get those.
Would you like for me to reach out to Endo?
Well, hey, you know, somebody called and said, you know, you got any idea, we got this potential horde of folks coming in.
Yeah. Because all that taking stuff's not fucking good. A safety issue.
Yeah. Get all wrapped up in it.
I'm anticipating a large crowd, people said, oh, we're gonna have two times, we've usually had.
Interesting. Even in the rain.
I'll reach out to Endo.
Okay, thanks. So, I guess something else, you probably, I don't know if y'all saw the email that Randy sent out late Saturday, good afternoon, about fishing days, they can't meet before their meeting. I think they're having a meeting now, aren't they, they just can't meet that timeframe before.
I don't know, I'm missing, I'm missing two, so that would be.
And, you know. Any comments, I just wanted to touch base.
Sounded like they wanted to talk about budget.
Well, we can't do that, exactly, we gotta do that in a open meeting, which is fine, but. So, when are they meeting, you know?
Do you want them to confirm if he's planning on canceling?
Are they still meeting on the sixteenth?
I think John's looking for input, Norm can't be there, and Kevin can't be there, and Nick's not gonna be there.
Is that like you, Liddy?
Well, no, and John and Sandy.
But John said he wasn't sure of his scheduling, so that kind of threw it up in the air, and I thought, is there gonna be a meeting or not?
Well, let's put it this way, we should get to them, just touch, it'd be nice to have a joint meeting, I can be pug as far as I'm concerned, heck, I don't, I don't, exactly enough. But we need to meet them, go over some numbers, just talk about budget and their concern. You know, on a side note, I spent a lot of time, well, what I could, on the revenue side of the general fund and looking at the trends, and we're actually, it's been a positive trend, we've. I was happy to see it. Our revenue in the general fund has gone up, been balanced over the last five years, it's not increased. So, that's good. I haven't dug into it, try to understand exactly why, but it is good. It is good.
Our financials.
Yeah. That's it. But, so, you know, it's taken some pressure off of concern I had over, over funding some things, certainly. I don't have anything else.
I wanted to ask Randy a couple of questions. Concerning the S R O. If these guys are trading shifts to work, work at the school, and they're not actually trading shifts, they're just, I mean, they're trading eight shifts for we're paying that officer that's working the road comp time. I don't think that's.
That's not usual. Last week I was off sick, so they were switching around to fill my position. So, I think that's the only thing they could come up with. But, I, yeah, I don't approve that either.
Okay, one other thing I want, I just wanna make clear on this money coming from the school. Everybody, all the officers understand that they are gonna be in rotation, and that's not gonna be extra money, right, to them?
Correct.
Okay, I just want.
Well, it is right now.
It is, but I'm saying going forward into next year, that is gonna be, I mean, if it funds another officer.
That's what it goes for, yes.
That's what I'm saying, you're saying, okay, if they work there, they're, they're.
It's a regular shift.
It's a regular shift at their regular pay.
Yes, they're not getting any extra money on top of the way it works now. It's just, it's just another shift day.
Right, the money that comes to the school and then go to the town. To help find that position is what is being said.
That was one of my questions of last, our last meeting, when you were talking about those guys only working an eight-hour shift. It kind of got me thinking, I mean, why would that be? If, if it's regular time, why don't they come in at six A M, run their shift for an hour and a half, run it from three, I, I'm just asking, I just.
Right now, because it's on their days off, and that's the only time the school's paying for them. But if, if we end up going the other way, it's still gonna be that way, because they'd only keep them forty hours a week. And if they're on that rotation for a month, that'll keep them at a hundred and sixty hours. We don't want, by federal law, we don't have to pay comp time or overtime until they reach a hundred and seventy-one hours in twenty-eight days.
Wouldn't that make their staffing easier if you could do that, Randy, I mean, have them on a shift when their time goes to school, they go to school, I mean, wouldn't that make that your life easier? I mean, to have, carve out an eight-hour shift when everybody else is doing twelve-hour shifts seems to be problematic. I guess what I'm saying.
Well, the thing is, is if we have a guy rotating through the schools five days a week at ten or twelve hours a day, they're gonna be racking up comp time.
Well, now, they're on a regular shift.
If they're assigned to work the school this month, they gotta work Monday through Friday every day.
Well, okay, they're scheduled to work twelve-hour shift.
They are right now.
And so, they're on for three days?
They're on Monday, Tuesday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday next week, just Wednesday, Thursday.
Twelve-hour shift during the daytime, works, we work at the school those hours that the schools requires them. Then, I mean, I don't, it just seems to me.
That would be a different guy in the school probably every two or three days.
Okay, that's not good.
It could be, I already had somebody tell me that if that's what you end up doing, is taking that overtime away, that they get an opportunity to do, then they didn't want any part of it, I told them, well, if it'd be an assigned shift, you would.
A shift, a shift, I'm not gonna stand where somebody, it's been, I don't want to call it gravy train, it's been a good thing for them. But, we still, even though our expenses have gone up quite a bit, as we discussed last week, our revenue is, is good, it's much more comfortable than I was a week ago. But we still. We need to wind our, we need to wind our money.
And I pointed out, my, my priority is, is to keep everybody a job.
Well, right, right.
So, that's my priority, I mean, they, they can find other opportunities to make more money, and I don't know an officer that doesn't work side jobs.
Well, you know, side jobs, one thing, but this is kind of like, I mean, a side job, I don't know, I guess it'd be a side job security or something.
Yeah, they do that, the hospitals, wherever. But, the other side of that is, is we're doing that, the same as the county's doing it, the main county's doing it, these guys are working in schools on their days off. They've got state policemen that work it, conservation officers that work it. And we had two conservation officers working in our rotation that were available to do that. One of them quit, and the other one's getting ready to retire, I think, so they just withdrew from doing it.
Well.
What about the ones that aren't, doesn't wanna work it, are they gonna have to?
Yeah.
They would have to, we use that money.
Yeah, if it's an assigned shift, they're gonna work it.
Well, the bottom line, from a town sitting in this seat with a fiduciary responsibility as elected official, we should make sure any contract the town gets into, we don't come out, you know, any worse, you know, than we were before we went in. And I think certainly argue that we were coming out on the short end there with total comp, that includes all benefits, the old amount, and I'm not sure, it's gonna be very close with the new amount. But, I mean, I guess from that point, we, we really should rotate them through on, on, on the regular shift, Randy, I mean, that makes sense. Yeah, that's gonna be less compensation to them overall, but it's not just about, it's about the whole package. We need to make sure the town isn't, you know, we're, right now, we're just flow through, we flow the money through and treat it like a side job, but, but if we do not do that, then it's going to be, well.
Now, the only other thing is, is I understand your point there, but don't, we have in the past put on there that the town doesn't get a benefit of it.
We don't want a benefit, we just wanna break even.
I know that, the town does benefit from having a second officer at the school and in town at the same time. They have left the school, and in the memorandum of understanding, if you read it, says that they can leave the school to respond to an emergency in town to assist, and that has happened a few times. So, but if the school goes to that contract, and we're saying an officer's gonna be there all the time, the school's gonna take that out of the contract, that they want the officer at the school. They're not gonna pay for a guy to be.
And then maybe they should just take it back in house and deal with the benefits themselves, and all the other goes with it, I mean, but we're.
And they could do that too, we're providing the service to them and taking on the responsibility, and so, I don't know, you know, you could cut this many different ways. And they do that, they, they cut the checks to the sheriff's department's employees.
They do a ten ninety-nine.
Well, yeah, then it's on the officers to track that further and combine.
Yep.
Yeah.
But if we get into that again, then we're right back to where we're at right now, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, that was my point to this question, so.
I had one other issue too, I had a phone call from a couple of different vendors on the square, wanting to know about the town enforcing the two-hour parking limit.
Really?
Yes.
Take the signs down.
Well, then you'll have vendors calling you.
Well, and they, they do have, yeah, they're gonna, and I guess they talked about it at Main Street too, and I think it's.
What is interesting is, go ahead, go ahead.
A few vendors are complaining about neighbor vendors who park in front of their business, and they're parked there all day long. And I said, well, it is a public street, it's no restrictions, I said, the sad thing of it is, is all those businesses on the square have an alley and back entrances to it.
They have.
And they could park back there, a lot of them could do their unloading and delivery.
I just wanna throw out there, I mean, this is amusing, because marking, parking is would, would, would.
Yeah, you're right.
But we, we have put that to bed probably, but, well, so what did you tell them?
I told them we'd look into it, but I didn't think the, I didn't think there was an ordinance intact to enforce those, those signs up there.
Well, once upon a time, we had parking meters, and we probably enforced it, but that's been back, we were probably all about that tall.
Fifties and sixties.
Yeah, we might even been around there. Well, maybe. Barely. What, Jeff?
That reminded me of something else. It just clicked with me. Gentleman by the name of Bill Whitmire down on Jackson Street, he lives right on Jefferson Street. He lives right on Jefferson Street, but the Jackson Street.
Yeah, I know where he's at.
That goes down through...
Down the alley.
He has a heck of a time with, with big trucks coming around that corner and cutting it wide and getting off.
Well, that truck down is probably trash truck, in my guess.
Yeah. Trash trucks are problematic, but even some regular trucks, they, they swing wide. And they get off into his property, and
Yes.
It's just very upsetting for him. And, and I've, I've tried to think of every thing I could think of to try to fix, you know, that problem. I talked to one of the trash companies about going back, going through there. It's just, I don't know. I'm at my wits' end. I don't know how to fix the problem for him.
Boulder, large Boulder.
I think that's what he's kinda leaning towards, is putting some big rocks up on his side of the property. You know, signage, it's marked, "No Through Traffic" on Stark Street. There's a sign there. Again, try, trying to enforce that.
Well, I don't know where the trucks gonna go until they come down that. They gotta get in and out.
Yeah.
The only other option is another alley. It's a straight shot with two S curves to get in and out. It's a very narrow alley, right there by his house, I know.
It used to be an alley straight through to, through to Finnerhome's parking lot. The town turned that and let Gooch have it. Well, parking slots, spots.
Well, I'm glad you brought it up. I recommend big, a big boulder. Of course, in Iowa, being up the trash truck strand and everything. But, well, back to the whole parking thing, what, what, what did you tell them?
Parking meters would solve that problem.
Yeah.
And then, then they'd be complaining about that too. And it's, it's one of those things, you can't make everybody that...
Well, you know, as far as vendors parking in front of vendors, of course, don't they know each other? Can't you go out and say, you know?
Apparently not. I mean, that's the same thing we get with my neighbor's dogs keep pooping in my yard.
Yeah.
They call us to take care of it.
Well, Main Street is a very effective organization. They, they should probably come up with a, a, a solution themselves. I mean, most of the people they're talking about are members of that organization.
And they also hope that maybe that new parking lot the town was putting in will be for all the courthouse employees so they can have more parking on the square.
Well, there's been talk about that and that direction could, I think that, you know, could happen someday. Uh, so, you know, there, there's...
It can be encouraged. I would not...
Well, you know, that's just a first step, baby steps, baby steps. But, uh, why, what do you, I don't know that we're gonna do anything. And I don't think we're gonna start enforcing, going to what the enforcement, the ordinance is, don't know what it is.
Look on everything with a position, see if there's anything that's from the past.
But, interesting.
Yes.
They should...
I think they're fine seventy-five cents.
What, seventy-five cents?
It's from the fifties. I'm telling you.
You should definitely start enforcing that.
Well, then you gotta pay someone to enforce it.
Right.
Please.
Yeah, okay.
Hey, we can hire a meter maid and get her a moped and a chopper, at least to chop tires, with how you need to park too long.
Oh, a lot of ten dollars.
Sounds like you're great on you. Where we gonna fund that from?
Yeah, where we gonna fund it?
Don't volunteer.
For Hall and... What do you think else?
I'll entertain that motion, Mr. Trump.
I'll say it.
All favor?
Aye.